Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, September 9th, 2019 at 7:02 PM. And tonight, we have a series of committee meetings. The first of which will be the Committee of the Whole. Before we do that, I'll explain a little bit about our -- the dais tonight and also the roles that people will be filling. Councilmember Grace is not able to be with us tonight, so that's an absence. Councilmember Kotzis is present tonight in the building. He is being very careful and recusing himself from the discussion of the Bailey's Trail System as well as any voting. So he's physically not in the room at this moment, just so all of you and the public know as well. And our Clerk of Council is away tonight. And Councilmember Butler has agreed to take notes for us. And so during the Transportation Committee, when you might normally see him walk into the audience, he will be remaining at the dais so that he can take notes and serve as the Acting Clerk of Council. I think that's all of my instructions. We are passing around a clipboard. If you think you might be wanting to make a comment or that you might have some questions about Bailey that you have not heard or had answered, please fill that out with your name and address. That'll save us time as you come up to the podium. One other comment, that anybody wanting to make comments or asking questions tonight after the presentations will have a three-minute limit. I have a sometimes handy, sometimes not-so-handy little buzzer system that I set the timer for three minutes for people when they want to make a comment about something. So that'll help us move things along, so we have enough time for everybody. And I think that that's about it. We'll go ahead and get started. I might offer a little bit of background information about the Bailey's Trail System. This has been a project, and we do have some people from the Wayne National Forest here representing the forest tonight and have been our advocates and also champions for what's called the Bailey's Trail System. And this is being proposed as an 88-mile trail through the Wayne National Forest. It's something that persons from the city and the county and many other organizations have been meeting about to try and bring about this possible partnership for building of the trails. And what we're here tonight to describe is the progress on that to date, the monies that have come in in terms of planning grants and preliminary design work. And we do have Seth Brown, who will be joining us to describe the financial commitment that's being requested from the city as a portion of the transient guest tax. And he'll be able to explain that. We do also have with us tonight, I know that the -- I'll turn this over briefly in just a moment to Councilmember Reisner and the mayor. And we have Auditor Hekt with us tonight to also answer any questions that we might have as this comes up. You may remember that council did consider an ordinance and passed it back in May. And that was an ordinance approving the outdoor recreation -- the establishment of the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, Council of Governments. And it authorized the mayor to enter into that agreement. That ORCA, what we're calling for a short name, the acronym ORCA, standing for that Outdoor Recreation Council, has been formed and the Council of Governments has been meeting. They just had a meeting this morning, which Councilmember Reisner and I were able to attend. Those meetings are open to the public, by the way, and the announcements for those are always published. Then, and there are representatives on that Outdoor Recreation Council from the city, the county, Nelsonville, Chansey, York, and York Township. In addition to that, there's been an advisory committee that has been appointed. And that advisory committee that reports into the Council of Governments has met. And Paige Alast from our Athens County Visitor and Conventions Bureau serves on that, as well as Andrew Bashaw, Jason Reed, Sarah Milligan, Donna Goodman, Jesse Powers, Terry Moore, Tara Gilts, and Nick Tepe. So we have a -- we're trying to get a balance of private and public organizations, also economic development and land use, health wellness, and also education, serving on that advisory committee to inform the activities of the Council of Governments. I think that's it for my background information. Councilmember Reisner?
Thank you, Madam President. That was an excellent summation of how things began and where we're at today. Today, we're going to be talking about the, at least in part, the proposed financing, what will the city be contributing, what will the county and so on. We'll touch on that through a slideshow presentation presented by Seth Brown, who is Representative Qualified Ventures, who is part of the funding source helping with the U.S. Forestry Department. So the way this will go is we'll start with the presentation, and then if there are questions from that, as you said, there'll be three minutes. And then move on to other officials who are directly involved with the planning and construction of the project. And then move on down to members of council to ask questions, and then open up to the public. Does that sound reasonable?
Sounds reasonable.
So if Mr. Brown would like to get his slideshow going, and maybe we'll get out of here by, I don't know, midnight?
Thank you, Councilmember Reisner, President Isley, Mayor Patterson, City Council. Thank you. My name is Seth Brown. I am the Director of Forestry and Land Use at Qualified Ventures. Got three real quick goals for today. One will be to talk about what an outcomes-based contract from the city of Athens to the Outdoor Recreational Council of Appalachia, or ORCA, would look like. And then the other is to make sure you come away with an understanding of who I am and the work that my company, Qualified Ventures, has been doing on behalf of this community in the Wayne National Forest for the last two years. We have about 10 minutes of presentation, and then I'll open up to five minutes of Q&amp;A. And I'll do my best to ensure that we are on time. So my name is Seth Brown. I've already introduced myself and what I do. I've been with Qualified Ventures for about three years. Prior to that, I was in the Army for five years as an officer, got out, went to grad school for public policy and business. I bring that up because that's exactly where we sit. We sit at the intersection of trying to solve public policy solutions by bringing in the private sector and making it to where they're working together to these challenges. Qualified Ventures is an outcomes-based capital firm that drives transformational health, social, and environmental impact. The two takeaways from this are, is that we're an impact firm that is mission-driven. We're in the process of becoming a benefit corporation. And then the other is that we drive outcomes-based solutions and outcomes-based financing. And what that means is we structure things to where the cost of the project is tied directly to the outcomes of which that project is supposed to be solving. I think we all know the challenges we face, right? Especially with climate change, especially with income inequality. The problems that you guys are trying to solve in communities across the country are huge. And we believe that in order to solve them, we need to think about new ways of approaching these problems, especially because a lot of these problems don't affect one department or one city. They affect multiple stakeholders. We fully recognize the constraints that are placed on local governments, especially when it comes to budgets, and how we need to approach these problems so that we're fully recognizing the precious resources that that is. And we also see an opportunity. And the opportunity there is through impact investing and the idea that there is money out there that which people are willing to put towards projects that are beneficial. So if you take these things, the fact that multiple stakeholders are affected, that budgets are strained, but there's someone out there who may be willing to support these projects, we think there's an opportunity. We strive to be the best of public, private, and nonprofit sectors, to try and bring them together in collaborative approaches, just as we've talked about ORCA and in the advisory committee and all the stakeholders that are there. It's what we're trying to do here as well. We do this in four areas, just real quick. Forestry and land use, I'll talk a little bit about the work we do later. Urban and coastal resilience, that's mainly helping municipalities adapt to climate change. So whether it's stormwater management or other things, making them more resilient. Agriculture, lots of things they do in that field, but a lot of it is working with upstream farmers to work on runoff for both pollution for downstream municipalities and downstream watersheds. And then health and human services, working on the social determinants of health, trying to make it to where healthier communities and healthier people are scaled up, like projects that actually impact the social determinants are scaled up and lower healthcare costs in general. These are some of the organizations we work with. I'll highlight the people who have paid for our work on this project later, but you may recognize some of these logos. We're now in our 17th state and have two international projects, which is awesome. We do consulting services, transaction structuring, and then project development, both with nonprofits that are looking to scale and municipalities that are hoping to work on problems, find solutions to some of the problems they have. In terms of our work specifically with the Wayne National Forest and Athens County, we have received funding from four sources. The U.S. Forest Service, the National Forest Foundation, which is the nonprofit partner of the U.S. Forest Service, the U.S. Endowment of Forestry Communities, and the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Governors and Premiers, of which the Governor of Ohio, I think, is sitting at the head of for this term. Takeaway here is that we're paid not at the completion of the project. We've been receiving funding from government and nonprofit sources throughout our time. I am approaching this as though you guys are fully aware of the Bailey's Trail System. You have already passed a resolution that supports the Bailey's Trail System, and you've already passed the authorization for the creation of ORCA, of which was created in part because of the issues that the Bailey's Trail System was bringing up for local governments. Highlights here, this is an 88-mile trail system on the Wayne National Forest that is a pretty big deal for a few reasons, one of which is that trail designers were able to design it where there weren't already trails. That's a pretty unique and special opportunity for trail designers. The other is that it's in Athens County, which has a lot of awesome resources. We're also centrally located to a large amount of population centers within a half-day's drive. And the way in which this project was selected means that you're on a path to receiving a lot of national attention based on the fact that it's a very unique partnership to the way this problem is being approached. So let's talk about the funding and financing from a larger scale. This is a $12.3 million project, $800,000 of which has already been spent. This is our community partners, this is the Forest Service. That money has already been deployed. We like to recognize the work that they have done to support the project. Of the $11.5 million remaining, you can kind of look at it in two different sources, one of which is through grants and philanthropy. And hopefully, this isn't news to anybody in the room for the grants that have been awarded or hope to be awarded here shortly. I can go down the line if it is news, but for the sake of time, we can also move on. And the last part is where we're hoping to use outcomes-based financing through the issuance of an Outdoor Recreation Environmental Impact Bond. That's the $3.6 million that's outlined in green. And we're going to talk about how the city's outcomes-based contract could support the at issuance. You'll also see there New Markets Tax Credits. That is a federal subsidy that for qualifying projects in qualifying areas can receive. And this is a qualifying project in a qualifying area. And if we are able to close and receive that subsidy, you're looking at about $2 million that would be going to the project that does not need to be repaid by anyone except for the federal government's allocation of tax credits over seven years. So when I talk about outcomes-based contract with ORCA, we're trying to do four things. We're trying to fund the construction of the trail system in a way that is funding operations as well and allows for the trail to be self-sustaining. We're trying to make sure that the region has the capacity and capability to make sure the trail is able to reach its full potential. And that includes workforce development, entrepreneurial support, marketing, all the things that make it to where this thing can work. We're trying to buy time. And what that means is the time to make it to where the trail can prove itself. This is going to take a couple of years to construct, and then you're going to have a period to where it's going to grow and demand. We want to make sure that the payments are as low to the city as possible in the beginning, and the trail can prove its value. And if it doesn't, we have a risk mitigation. And that's the fourth point, which is to mitigate risk. That is, if the trail does not deliver on the terms that we believe it can do, the cost to the city would be lower. So the amount that we're looking at for the city to be able to support is a third of that environmental impact bond. So a third of the $3.6 million, or in other words, $1.2 million, which is less than 10% of the total project cost. But this would not be debt. This would not be debt on the city's balance sheet. This would be a contract of which the city would be providing funds to the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia. The way it would work is that the city would commit to $90,000 a year at a minimum. No one comes to the trail. It's $90,000 a year for the period of 20 years of which we've said. You have the ability to close out at any point while it's going on, but it's marked for 20 years to allow for flexibility of the issuance of the environmental impact bond. And then the performance piece, this is where the outcomes piece comes in, is that any of the increase in transient guest tax that is attributable to visitors on the trail would increase the city's contribution. So hypothetically, in year four, if it's proven that $10,000 is being generated in transient guest tax from visitors that are coming in and using the trail system, the city would contribute $100,000 in year four, not $90,000. That evaluation period would stop in year seven. So in year seven, whatever the impact of the trail system is, the city would be committing to that amount for the remaining 13 years to 20 years. Once again, it could close out at any time. Really simply, what this looks like, and hopefully, you've heard this spiel before, the impacts associated with the trail, because there's health benefits, there's social benefits, there's intangible benefits, there's environmental benefits if it's done properly. But this is from the city's perspective. When you have new visitors coming in and spending money, you're going to have an economic impact that results in an increase in transient guest tax from the city's perspective. That's what we've been looking at. Now, we believe that the trail can produce $40,000 in new transient guest tax pending by year seven. That's what we believe. But there's a lot that, you know, goes into that, and there's a lot that could have changed. There could be less visitors, more visitors, there could be greater spending, less spending. There'd be a greater percentage of day visitors than there are overnight visitors. There could be some performance deviation on where we think that that trail, the trail's actually bringing in in terms of transient guest tax. That's where you get on the right. The right is taking that expected graph on the left and saying, well, what happens if you vary with visitation? The red being underperformance and the green being overperformance, looking at either, you know, no one's coming, all the way to half as likely that we think is the expected to twice as much. Now, if you couple that change in variation with the $90,000 commitment, it would look like this all put together, which is that the city would commit $90,000 a year for 20 years, and if no one comes, you're committing $90,000. That would mean that it was underperforming, and the city would receive a payment at the end of year seven that lowers the cost of the trail system to the city. If the city is within, if it's performing within the white, meaning in between the red and the green, the city would be increasing its contributions up to year seven and then committed to that for the rest of the 20 years. And the green is an overperformance expected, which means that it's generating way more than expected. You know, this is what we're looking at in an outcomes-based contract. I know that there will be follow-on questions. I always like to close and end with this, which is, you know, I come in and talk about how we can fund this and how we can pay for it, but that is not the whole point of this trail system. This trail system's going to have a lot of benefits to a lot of people, and it's important to know that if no one comes and no one spends any money, this is going to be a valuable asset for the people of Athens County. So with that, I'm ready for questions.
Okay. And, well, and do we want, Mayor, did you want to make any comments first or not, or wait for questions?
Well, I can certainly comment on this. I think that what President Isley, you, and what Councilmember Reisner have said, you know, is clearly spot-on with the amount of effort that's gone into this already. We've been talking about this for several years. But, you know, quite honestly, this isn't anything new. This is a conversation that actually started in 1996, I believe, '94, '96, somewhere in that timeframe of thinking about this. But with the way that the U.S. Forest Service and the Wayne National Forest thankfully is starting to think about land use and land use plans, to be able to use 9,000 acres and create 88 miles of mountain biking trail, for me, personally, I view that for our county and for our city, another way in which we're diversifying our economy, and we have to at this point in the game. And I'm looking at student enrollments decreasing and a number of other factors out there. I view this as one way in which if we can draw 180 to 300,000 tourist visitors coming here to be using this, I can certainly see that that's going to have a positive impact on our local economic, our local economy. I think with the soon-to-be-constructed, if it's not underway at this point in time, the Phase 1, I think will certainly be telling as well to start to see what impact that's having with the first 12 or 13 miles of trail that is going to start soon, if not right away. But that all said, and I should also point out that this will be one of the largest mountain bike facilities or outdoor recreation spaces, you know, certainly within the region, if not along the eastern seaboard. That might be stretching a little bit, but it's going to be large. The other thing is, I know we've all been talking all along about this being mountain biking slash hiking, but in my conversations with the folks at the Wayne National Forest, that other outdoor recreation can also be taking place up in there if we find the right person who wants to, who knows, create a zipline area within this thing, which again would draw more people in, something that I think might be rather interesting. But anyway, it's a, it's been a long conversation, if not two years longer, that we've been kind of talking through this and trying to understand, one, the paper success model, which is new. It's different. But when I look at other places like Columbus, investing in the metro parks, the closest one to the city of Athens is the Clear Creek Metro Park, you know, it's another way in which you're diversifying your outdoor recreation spaces so that, you know, you can keep people healthy and physically fit, but also it's a draw.
All right.
Questions? Member McGee?
Thank you. Would you mind going back to that last slide because I could not see part of it on the side of it?
I'm back on my screen. I don't know if I need to.
Yeah, that one. It says their trial generates 160K to something that I can't see that part. Could you push it over a little bit so we can see what the other figure?
Oh, great. That is, trail generates over $60,000 with the transient guest tax.
Oh, okay.
Roughly, when I was saying $40,000.
Okay, I see what you mean. I just couldn't read that and was wondering what was there. Okay, getting back to my question, first I'll tell you, I'm a little bit suspicious of any kind of venture capitalism project coming to Athens, especially where the city ends up paying $1,800,000 over 20 years minimum if this is at all successful. And I think we really have to look at what success is based on this for, there are certain ways to do it, of course, but the question is, who's really making the money? When we're talking about venture capitalism, and that's what we're really talking about, somebody's investing, right? And you kind of explained to us that the state is investing money and private charities and foundations are investing monies, but I take it that private banks and investment companies are investing monies as well, and they're expecting a return on that income? Is that correct? Do you know what kind of return they're expecting?
So we're, I can tell you what we're pitching for, and we'll figure out where it'll go. So it's all based off of what we think the city would be borrowing based off the latest issuance from the pool that was issued about three years ago, and then also what the USDA World Development quoted. So it's about 4.25% for a long-term investment of over 20 years. What we're, I want to call, correct one thing, though, is that we're not venture capitalists. We're not pulling in venture capital money. Venture capital is all about trying to scale up, you know, brand-new, early-stage businesses with the hopes of really high returns and then a lot fail. That's not what we do. We work with impact investors and community development financial institutions, and what we're hoping to get from them is a concessionary rate, which means a lower-than-market rate for the first seven years, of which they would be repaid for the time that they gave up in them not charging market rate. But if the project didn't do well, the city of Athens would be paying a lower rate. So when you said they'd be paying $1.8 million for 20 years, you'd be paying $1.8 million for 20 years if you did a 20?
1.80.
Yeah, you'd be paying $1.8 million over 20 years if you issued a bond at 4.25% for $1.2 million for 20 years.
Yeah. And you had indicated we were not borrowing the money, but you used the term borrow when you were describing this. So actually, I mean, are we borrowing it and is it a loan or?
So it's a really good, it's a really good clarification that needs to be made. We're not asking for the city to have debt on their balance sheet at this time. What we're asking for is the city to enter into a contract, a long-term contract, with the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, and those revenues will be what we finance off of. So it's similar, but it allows us to sort debt and operations.
Member Paul?
I have a few questions. I think following on to what Patrick was saying, is that there's differential risk to the differential investors that are going forward with this. And the risk is quite high for the city because they're going to have a minimum payment no matter what, you know, if it's, doesn't work very well because we get in the middle of some kind of recession or something and nobody goes out because everybody's terrified. You could, you know, you could see it actually drawing money from other programs that are in Athens. I know other nonprofits are a little concerned about that. So what is the risk for the city compared to the impact investors?
So the impact investors are taking, both people are taking risks. The only way this works is if they believe that the city is actually going to repay the commitments of which they promised, just as the city believes that they're going to get benefits that are coming back. I want to say, as we look about this project, there is no way that this project will not be beneficial to the city's residents and the county at large. There's no way, even where very little people attend. What you're asking specifically about transient guest tax is there is potential for the trail to not provide enough value to where it justifies the $1.2 million investment, but that's where that performance payment comes back. And that's where the investment cost lowers, which makes that risk really low. So let's say that, you know, the city could have half as many visitors as expected and still break even. With the performance payment, they could have about a third of the amount of visitation as expected and break even. No one's going to cover that third, though. Below that third, the city would be losing a little bit of money, not nearly as much as they would be if it was traditionally offered. But what we're doing this is in a way that allows the city to be in the best position possible, with supporting a staff position that can, you know, actually make it to where somebody's orchestrating and managing the project and has funds for entrepreneurial support, for marketing, and can deploy those. And if it doesn't work, then the cost lowers, and that's the best we can offer.
But we would still, the $90,000 per year will always be, for up to 20 years, will be paid by the city?
Yes.
And that's, that's the base rate?
Yes.
And you talk about ORCA. Is ORCA the holder of the MOU for this whole project?
So the, well, the MOU between the city and the?
This, who actually owns the infrastructure itself?
So there will be a nonprofit that the Board of the Council of Governments sits on that'll be part of the New Markets Tax Credit transaction.
And where does that board sit? Who has?
So that is the Board of the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia. So if it's a five-member, it's a five-member Council of Governments, three of those members are on the board, and those three members are on the board of the nonprofit at heart.
Okay. You talk about matrices, the different types of metrics that we need to put together to actually identify an increase in the transient guest tax. Those have to be really specific because I know that there's a lot of other programs and ideas that are going out there at the same time with other facets of our tourism. And so my concern is that at one point, Bailey is credited for things that it may not be credited, that it may not be actually the cause of an increase in the transient guest tax. And that's not fair to the other programs that are going on for those, that sort of thing, because there may be other programs out there that could grow just as much. So I think those metrics.
Would it be helpful to talk about the evaluation for a second?
That would be great. Thank you.
Great. So the way that we're looking at the evaluation is there's going to be a few things that are continuously monitored. So things that like are trail counters, you know, parking receipts, whatever, you're going to be able to measure in real time how many people are actually using the trail system. And then what you'll do is you'll conduct intermittent, what they call intercept surveys. So we're going to the trailheads, and you're interviewing people. So you're counting how many people are there, and you're becoming a profile of who those visitors are. Where are they coming from? What are they spending? Where are they spending their money on? And then you corroborate the interviews with the counters that are going automatically to get an idea of, well, how many people are actually here and what are those spending profiles like? What we're hoping to do is to be able to do those intercept surveys every two years, but have the continuous monitoring every year and to be able to correlate them. We will never be able to say with 100 We will never be able to say with 100% certainty that this actual dollar ended up within the city council. What we can say, though, is that it is going to be monitored, which almost no programs are in this country, and that the, by measuring at the source, rather than looking at the tax receipts and saying, oh, the tax receipt's been up, but they opened up a new hotel, or, you know, the opposite of a recession, maybe the economy's doing really well, by interviewing at the source, you get closer to that attribution.
Right. And quite a clarification, I think it is Voynovich School involved in the evaluation plan?
We plan to have the Voynovich School of C, which is the social entrepreneurship ecosystem, if you know the proper term, to be involved with the evaluation.
And I think because you were talking about this possibly being a model for other programs, I think that having those reproducible matrices and the metrics are really important because otherwise we can't, we can't develop a model to show somebody else how it works. Now, the one last question that I have, real quick. At the end of the seven years, when our, like, final rate that we're charged for the next 13 years, is that the expect, is that an increase over an average of a bunch of years? Or how is that going to...
So it would be the, it would be the impact in year seven. And once, some of this can be negotiable, but the, what we're envisioning is the year seven impact is where you're pegged, but we assume that to grow over the next 13 years, but the contribution from the city not to grow. Does that make sense? So even though it's not an average of the last seven years, that will be increasing. I'd also like to say one thing that goes to your former point, which is what we are measuring to look at the financial repayment to the city is not the only thing that will be measured. There are impacts that are going to be reported out that we think are extremely important. So things like number of businesses in Chancy, the real estate value of property in Chancy, the people's perception of their park, which in the last survey done, you know, 18 months ago, was that it was an unsafe place to be. We're going to look at the number of people who use the Hawk Hocking Adina Bike Way's extension to get from Chancy to the Plains to go to doctor's appointments and go to, you know, food access, because, you know, there's a high percentage of people there who don't have cars. Those aren't going to be driving the city's repayment, but it'll be a look at, was this trail actually successful in driving, you know, a positive outcome in the area?
I think, one last thing is that it's...
This is the last, last thing.
Sorry. Well, I think I've been rightly seen as being kind of a critic of this, and I think that it's important to get some of these issues out because I don't want to have to sit there and re-explain them. Thank you very much. So the last thing is, we talked a lot about capital and capacity building, especially in the tiny towns that are being targeted, which, you know, can go to really good, it can work out really well, or it can just kind of gentrify them. And that, that may not be a city of Athens responsibility, but they're in the greater, our greater communities, so that's a real issue. I must admit that now having Rural Action onboard gives a huge amount of credibility to this process, and I think that that is a good thing, and to go forward with their credibility, and I'm willing to, to look at some of the other things that I have a little issue with, with capacity and the building of community and capacity in places like Chancy, but I'll leave it to the pros at Rural Action. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here, Mr. Brown. I'm curious about the environmental impact assessments that have been done on the property. We had a small spur, bike path spur being built in the city recently, and an environmental impact assessment changed the planning and the funding that we needed to put into that spur. Can you tell us a little bit about the assessments that have already been done and what the chances are that more money will be needed in case they run into an environmental problem in the Wayne that was not previously?
So I will defer to the Wayne National Forest, but it did go through NEPA, which is the National Environmental Protection Act, what is it? Sorry, policy act. It did go through the NEPA process, through a categorical exclusion of which they found no major environmental impacts. It's also important to note, when you look at the environmental impact of the project overall, the abandoned mine land funds pilot program will be supporting abandoned mine land restorations in the trailheads near Chancy and Donville, so there's an environmental impact and positive there. And we also believe that there should be environmental impacts associated with, this area of the Bailey's Track is usually a higher end of where there's cases of illegal dumping, and we think that a sanctioned use will displace an unsanctioned use so that that could decrease, and that the environmental stewardship could hopefully go up. But for NEPA, would you address that? He's worried about increased costs.
Yeah. Good evening. Jason Reed, Athens District Commissioner of the Wayne National Forest. And in terms of the environmental analysis that's complete for the entirety of the 88 miles, we've looked for animals, plants, heritage resources, all within a 100-foot corridor, and so taking a center line, 50 feet each side, it's all been cleared and we're good to go, so we're not expecting any changes.
If there was some sort of unfortunate catastrophic environmental event, a forest fire, is there any, you know, what happens if the trail's up and built and running and doing great and then the entire area goes, you know, is there any plan for that, or who, where does the funding come to bring it back, or what happens?
Yeah, I think in terms of just our overall current management activities, whether it's timber harvesting or prescribed fire for some of those types of projects that occur within our overall existing infrastructure already, so we have ATV trails, hiking trails, biking trails, horse trails all across the forest, and we've dealt with that and managed that over time without any real issue.
Okay, I'm sorry, a final question. The mayor talked about additional uses possibly in this area. Zip lining was the example he used, but I don't believe we'd be going to motorized vehicles on these trails. Is that correct?
That's correct, right. These would all be non-motorized, right? Bicycles, hikers, runners, that type of thing.
Member Butler?
No questions at the moment. Too busy taking us.
Thank you for your service, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you.
It was very interesting.
Well, let's move on to the administration.
I just had a follow-on question slash comment for what Member Crowell was mentioning about, you know, the environmental impacts and the trails and what happens if there were a natural disaster, i.e. a fire that took place up there. So this is again a question for Jason Reed. Will these trails be of benefit in the case that there were a forest fire up in that area, given that there's 88 miles now of trail to get through?
Sure. I think anytime you have a fire break, that's definitely an option as far as putting something out. I think the larger picture, looking at our overall forest ecosystem here and how hooves are on the decline, you know, we have a number of prescribed fire projects, actually just signed a decision on one here recently, but, you know, that's really geared toward the perpetuation of an oak-dominated forest as well as reducing the risk of any catastrophic wildfire.
Yeah, I just, I view this, this trail system as a potential, you know, brakes that are in place when the trails are there. You know, my father worked for the OS Forest Service for many, many years, and in the Cascade National Range, there was logging trails that became natural fire breaks if there were something catastrophic, lanky fire to take place.
I'll let Member McGee ask one more question.
Actually, I have three real quick ones. Okay, so the first question, are there any other models of other places that have done this that we can use as a model for us? Yes or no?
For outdoor recreation specifically? No.
For this kind of trail?
For, no, this would be the first of its kind.
Okay. Second question, quick. Are there any other government entities which are contributing to this, or is it just the city of Athens voting it out?
So it'll be, that's a good point. So we're going to have the same contract in terms of contributions for the county, and we're going to be going through that process as well. And then it's also important to note that there's federal and state funds that have been deployed as well.
So the only other government we're talking about that has to make the decision is Athens County? Okay. And one last question for the ATV thing. Someone mentioned that there's no ATVs anticipated on the trail, but that can change anytime. Is that correct?
No.
Is there anything that's going to be written into the contract that would stop it?
It's actually written into our forest plan and our environmental documents, so that it will not be allowed.
Okay.
I think we have to contend all the time with the illegal use of it, and that's something that, you know, we're definitely got our eyes wide open on and addressing as we move forward through the construction piece, but no, they will not be permitted.
Thank you.
Madam President, you have a question?
Nope. I'm going to hand over to you as a clipboard because those are a list of people who potentially wanted to make comments, and we'll set the timer as you come up or to, and if you have a question, you can actually address it to Mr. Brown or the Forest Service. So Jeff, you want to start with that?
Dan, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, V O R? Boris.
Borisak?
Yeah, Borisak.
Would you like to speak?
And as you introduce yourself, if you could give us your address also, and whether or not you represent a group, so that the people viewing the tape tonight can hear that?
Dan Borisak, address is 16017 Mansfield Road, Keenan Township. Speaking primarily from Rural Action's standpoint, as you had mentioned that, and really appreciate that, the kind of affirmation of the work that we've been doing in the communities. A few points that I had made listening to the talk, we, it started off as talking about building a trail, and I think we look at it a lot as the trail track, physical track in the woods, but we all know that assets need to be in place before a lot of economic development can actually take place. And this is something that has been repeated over and over throughout a lot of sections in the United States, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Oregon, West Virginia, Arkansas, where trail systems were invested in, and economic development just grew right out of that pretty, pretty completely, pretty consistently throughout all of these cases. And some of these trail systems have been in place for 25 or 30 years. There's a lot of underground capacity that's been built into that, and that had come up too, as one of your comments. What I can say is that the communities, at least from Rural Action's perspective that we have been engaged with, and some of the communities that the Bailey's Working Group have been engaged with, are discussing this, are discussing this actively now and have been for a year and a half to two years. So this isn't, again, a blindside, a lot of the people in the communities. The communities that we work with at Rural Action are actively now engaging entrepreneurs. They're looking at how to better position themselves from a marketing standpoint for tourism in general, and bicycle tourism is another layer upon that. They're also looking at ways to add capacity to just help people stay overnight, so overnight lodging with Airbnb listings, cabin listings and such. So I feel as though that's a really important thing to consider with this, is yes, it's, there's risk involved, the payment for the city and for the county, but your own county has invested some money already through the Community Improvement Challenge, setting up shop in some of these towns and getting people engaged and building their capacity. So there's work that's been going on already. A final comment that I would make about this is, when we look at maybe enrollment going down at the colleges and outflow of populations, there's also a real interest that I've picked up on, and I've also have compared this to other things happening around the country, that in a lot of rural communities, there's a strong desire for people that grew up to come back, and there's a strong desire for people that are maybe wanting some of the amenities like robust outdoor recreation as something to lock into and move nearer to. So there's some fringe benefits too that we haven't even discussed, that this could be an attraction to people to return to the area, for entrepreneurs to return to the area, for families to return to the area. So we have an investment that we're discussing, we have capacity building that's starting already, we have proven results or economic growth from other parts of the country, I just urge you to kind of consider the hold, you know, along with this really big decision that you have to make about committing to this money if that is what you decide to do. But I feel really excited about this opportunity.
Thanks. Thank you.
Carrie Boyle?
Like you said, my name's Carrie Boyle. I'm with the Athens City County Health Department. My address is 60 East 4th Street, apartment 102 in the Plains. So at the Health Department, I'm a health educator and also the Creating Healthy Communities Coordinator, and tonight I'm here to show the Health Department's support of the Bailey's Trail System. At the Athens City County Health Department, we believe everyone has the right to live a healthy life. All the work that we do supports this, and we do this work through policy system and environmental change. Programming, education, behavior change is very important, but it's not enough and it's not sustainable on its own. It's crucial that we create environments where the healthy choice is the easy choice. Rather than saying over and over again, you need to eat healthy food, we work to change the systems and the policies and environments where you actually access that food, so you can actually make that choice to eat healthy. We do the same thing with physical activity opportunities. We want community members to have access to healthy foods and physical activity opportunities where they live, work, and play. Unfortunately, in our county, communities still struggle to have access to these essential opportunities. We support the Bailey's Trail System because this will shape the environment and create a huge access point for physical activity and more for all residents in our community. Take Chancy, for example. We have worked in this village for years. We've hosted bike rodeos, community conversations, and helped expand the library's book-a-bike program to the Chancy branch. While having many discussions with the young people of this community, we quickly learned that there's a division created by the state route that intersects the village of Chancy. Many young people actually voiced that they were not allowed to cross the state route or even go to the park. They were literally bound by the road because it was simply not safe and they weren't allowed to do that. So to us at the Health Department, this is a huge problem and a major barrier. The park in Chancy is one of their few community assets, if there are only, and it goes unused due to unsafe access. With this, we have an incredible opportunity to address this through the Bailey's Trail System. By creating a major trailhead at the Chancy Park, we have an opportunity to redesign that community park so it can be accessed and used by everyone. With this comes so many benefits for health, community development, and community inclusion. It would be such a shame to miss this opportunity to develop and better small communities in our county. In addition to this, with the future development of the spur off of the Hawk Hocking Adina Bike Way into the village of Chancy and to also the community park, we have the possibility to create a network of access to communities in our county who are typically isolated from many resources that are actually centered in the city of Athens. This connectivity of access has, can greatly better the quality of life, of health of our residents. It can also create a system of access for tourists to partake and experience the many exciting things that our area has to offer, especially those located within the city of Athens. So I believe, and we believe at the Health Department, that by creating this opportunity, it really opens a door to endless possibilities. It increases possibilities for physical activity, health benefits, access to resources, tourism, a sense of community. Truly will develop our, and expand our community growth and really lessen community isolation. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you. Scott Kreps?
Hi, thanks for having me. Scott Kreps with Hocking College. I'm faculty for the Eco-Tourism and Adventure Leadership Program there. And so in that role, I've been a part of a few things with this group that are completely, it's very exciting stuff because on one hand, so, you know, as an eco-tourism practitioner, we have looked at the issues of gentrification possibilities, and looking down the road is such a huge part of the best practices in eco-tourism, that each group that we're working with, including Rural Action, of course, are keeping that at the heart of what we're doing. So that's encouraging, you know, asking people questions, talking with the kids at the library, having organizational setup so that we can, we can drive that with policy, that we're actually concerned about equitable development, and I think that's, that's super exciting. That's, for me, as a practitioner and educator in eco-tourism, that's, that's some pretty powerful stuff. But more on like, I guess, an exciting level too is that... But more on like, I guess, an exciting level too, is that I've got some students that have just taken or currently taking a sustainable trail development course, and they will be working this next, in the next couple of weeks with their representative from the Appalachian Conservation Corps and some of the boots on the ground. So having students from Hocking and the possibility of them utilizing their skillset that they're getting, that's pretty exciting as well. And then I'll just close with saying that, you know, I appreciate the mayor's comments on diversifying our economy and just the future of possibilities. We've run some eco-guided tours out of Hocking College-supported activities, and we intend to grow those capabilities. And so, you know, eco-guided tours and eco-tourism and in general, the concept of diversifying our economy in that way is really exciting stuff. So thanks so much for having me here today, and I really appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Debbie Phillips?
I'm the CEO of Rural Action and live out in Albany. My address is on the thing. Really appreciate that you are giving this such thoughtful consideration. We have some tremendous assets in the region, and this has the opportunity to really create a lot more that will bring folks in and hopefully get people to stay and spend more time here and get deeper into our communities. We, it's a project that has a lot of partners. It's an incredibly complicated project, both just in the structures of who all is involved in working on it and the financing. So having questions about it makes a lot of sense, and I'm really glad that you're digging in and evaluating all of that. Our role in this, we've been involved, Dan works with our Entrepreneurial Communities Program, and so he's been working in local communities on developing support for entrepreneurs in small towns and rural places in the region. We really see this as an extension of that work, to be able to work with the people in the trail towns, to support entrepreneurs, develop the local economy, and make sure that the potential for money coming into the region is going to really benefit the folks who live here in the region. We are the lead applicant on the power proposal, so if, you know, if that all goes well, we're going to be able to support a lot of that work throughout the region and a lot of the partners who are engaged in that work. That focus really is on the local impact, so one of the things that Dan has done already in our program is to provide support with folks on how to Airbnb in rural places, and some of you've heard a little bit about that program, but some local participants who've been through that workshop and gone, completed their worksheets and done things, have gotten their listings up and gotten bookings within a couple of weeks of having done that workshop. So we know that we can provide effective, immediate support to folks to bring some of those dollars into these local communities and make sure that benefit goes deep. We're also excited about the workforce development piece of this project. The Appalachian Conservation Corps that you just heard about includes, the participants in that program get credentials and receive hiring preferences with, across the Department of Interior. So it's the potential to build skill in our region and help people find a way to get good jobs and be able to stay here. Beyond that, we're going to work with high school interns to support local businesses and get out there and learn some of those entrepreneurial and business skills as well. So we're really trying to help young people in the region find a way to see a future for themselves and a way to be here, being part of a local economy that has the power to really grow. So it's an exciting project. It is very difficult, I think, to tease apart those questions about attribution versus contribution. When you have a really complicated project and you're looking at big trends in the economy, to say which piece is driving the trends that we see, so the fact that there is a thoughtful evaluation plan here, I think is really smart and can help us evaluate the investments that so many partners have made. So the city's being asked to take some risk, but a lot of organizations, private organizations, other units of government, private foundations, there are a lot of folks who are all in and are already invested. So we're really, I'm just glad that you are considering this and hope that you're going to decide to support it. I think it has great potential for the region.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Paige Allas?
Our office address is 667 East State Street, and I'm the Director of the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I also serve as the Chair of the Advisory Committee to the ORCA Board. It's very exciting to hear this conversation going on. I've been in my position for 13 years, and really, in the last two years, we've seen such a huge increase in the conversation about tourism development. We have invested millions of dollars in local infrastructure to support projects like this. Our hotels have invested, our restaurants have invested, you have invested, your streets, everything from broadband to sewer. All of these things play into investing in your future. We talk about this project as the best opportunity that's come to our county and to this specific area of the county since coal mining. I can't think of another opportunity that's come to us like this, and that's what makes it so viable and so important for us to consider. What are our other options for economic development here? If you know June Holly, she always inspires me and I always think about her in situations like this. She calls upon us to think about the adjacent possible. So you're focused on the dollar amount and you're focused on what is going to be built, but I really want you to think about the future of this. 20 years from now, what does the adjacent possible really look like? What can be done with this asset that is really your investment but a gift to the community? We always say that tourism is a byproduct of good community development. What your local residents love and the culture that you create here, based on what you like to do with your time and how you like to use the assets of your city, that is what a visitor will attach themselves to. So when you think about all the things that you love in Athens and you look at the small capacity we have to support it ourselves, realize that this investment brings visitors to your community that will help you hang on to the things that you love the most. And not only that, but they are going to form a really great relationship with Athens. I want to, just the last thing, convey to you our support for the project and helping you to answer your questions, to serve as a resource to you, and to know that if you go forward with this project, that we are ready, in addition to Rural Action and ACNET and the university and local residents, to really bring this project to the forefront. The Visitors Bureau, I will say, I'll brag on my team, they're pretty good at this stuff. So we're anxious to get to work on it, and I just want to reiterate that we're here to support the project in any way that we can. So thanks for taking up the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don McCarthy?
My name is Don McCarthy. I work with Wayne National Forest. I've been the Bailey's Team Leader for this project, and I would like to first just give everybody, remind you what the mission of the Forest Service is. It is caring for the land and serving the people. It's something that we tend to forget, but it is something that the Bailey's Project has really brought to the forefront. We're looking not just at how we're maintaining and managing our natural resources, but how we are also being responsible to our local economies. One of the things that I would like to also ask is for Seth to provide a little clarification on the $90,000. I think that there was a piece of that that was missed with talking about the operations for the Council of Governments, so Seth, could you please talk to that?
One thing that was important to note that we were talking about on the side, and hopefully it didn't get lost in translation, is that $90,000 commitment will help support all the supportive infrastructure around it. So the staff for the Council of Governments, future marketing, you know, supporting Paige and the efforts that they're doing, there will be money for operations that are out of that $90,000, whereas if you're just issuing traditional debt, you're paying for the infrastructure you invested on with no supportive services. So I wanted to make sure that that $1.8 million just wasn't for the trail, it's for operations as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Seth, and I will just add to that, you know, with this, there's a potential to hire an executive director who could then bring in more, you know, additional grant funding and work on other projects. Because we talked about the Council of Governments being bigger than Bailey's, this would be the opportunity to start building for additional outdoor recreation opportunities within Athens County and the region. So thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Reed? You don't want to speak? All right. Now you can't. But there, anyone else in the audience care to speak? When you get done, could you come up and sign this?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I was running late. I was teaching and earning my keep. So my name's Danny Twilley. I am an Assistant Professor in Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Program here at Ohio University, and I live at 33 Graham Drive. I've been very blessed in my life to, not only personally, but in my career, explore outdoor recreation and its impact on communities. And over the last four years, I've invested a lot of time and energy in understanding that, not just for our local communities, but by traveling to different parts of the country and different parts of the world, really seeing its impact. And I think it's important to recognize the mission statement of the Bailey's Trail System, and that's to develop a system of trails that creates sustainable and equitable economic impact, provide health and wellness opportunities, and to increase community connectivity and pride. And, you know, I've been, I want to share with you a couple of case studies where this has actually come to fruition, especially from the economic side. There's a trail system in northeast Vermont, it's called Kingdom Trails. It's in the middle of nowhere, about three and a half hours from Boston, two and a half hours from Montreal. They've been seeing in 20, over the last eight years, a 20% increase in visitation to where last year, they saw 140,000 visitors who spent $10 million. They don't nearly have the infrastructure and opportunities that we have in our community to do so. In northwest Arkansas, a study that was done in 2017 saw 90,000 visitors spend $27 million in that community. And finally, in western North Carolina, 30, in Pisgah and Nana Hala National Forest, mountain bikers spend $30 million annually in those regions. So point being is that these numbers that we're talking about in terms of visitation and potential economic impact have been tested and proven in other areas. We're trying to bring that opportunity here. In addition, when we look at it from a recruitment standpoint for residents, Headwaters Economic Studies showed that when a community, a rural county is designated as a recreational rural county, they see an increase in people moving there, and they see those people who are moving there are coming in with higher salaries versus if you are just a rural community, you're seeing actually a net migration of people leaving your area. In addition, we're also seeing in 2017, a study showed that the generation born between 1980 and 2000 are outspending Generation Xers and Baby Boomers on things like travel, activities, and sport. They're looking for quality of life, they're looking for experience. Brookings Institute studies showed that younger generations are moving to western cities such as Colorado Springs, Denver, and Seattle, in the pursuit of an experience-driven lifestyle. They want to figure out where they want to live first, and then they'll figure out how to work because they want access to outdoor recreation. And finally, over the last 10 years, Utah Texans and Colorado saw the largest percentage of people moving to their area. Utah and Colorado are known for their outdoor recreations, and it just so happens to be they are the first two states to create offices of outdoor recreation. What I'm trying to tell you is that this isn't a, we're not trying to create something new, a new model. It's been proven in other areas and other communities. We're trying to bring that here. And I'll tell you, we have a test case about 25 minutes north of this area is the Hocking Hills. They're seeing three and a half to five million visitors a year. We know that, it's hard for them to track it. So we know tourists will come to the region. We're just trying to get more of them to come down here and visit us and to support the great work that the Visitors Bureau is also doing. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you. Auditor, head.
Not that I want to prolong this meeting, but
That's okay.
I have about three things just to address that people might be wondering about from the monetary standpoint. My understanding is, just so everybody knows, that we're pledging TGT funds, the city's share of that, to make our payments. So our payments are limited to what we get from our TGT funds, is that correct? Yeah, so we will not be in a position where the payments go up and we will have to dip into money that we'd be using for other city, you know, expenses. Two is, I think, I always question when we spend money outside of the city limits, this is city revenue that we're using, but I also think that the impact on the city, when you think about people who might be traveling and need a place to stay, a restaurant to eat at, a place to get a drink, they will be coming to Athens. They won't be doing that in Chancy, at least not for quite a few years, they might eventually, but so I, and I'm not a mountain bike person, but I think that we need to offer things that everybody likes. And from what I hear from people who are, this has become a pretty more active participation in this sport and events. They can have events, not just individuals or families deciding to do this, they can have mountain bike events that will be planned by our person that will be paying to bring even more people here, maybe even from Vermont. They want a different trail, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. All right.
I think we've pretty much beat it to death, at least at this point. Monday for council, what legislation will the administration need from us to carry forward?
We will probably be bringing forward legislation that is authorizing me to enter into contract to engage with the COG using monies coming from the transient guest tax. There may be a couple other pieces of legislation that'll come forward as well.
Okay. Well, I guess that concludes that bullet point.
Okay.
Well, no, not yet.
One question, and then we'll move on.
Just one question, is this going to go for three readings or are we going to have it rushed through? That's what I thought.
That's three.
Three readings? Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for all the comments and questions and for people coming here to participate tonight and offer information. We'll move on to the Transportation Committee.
No, we have one more item.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Uptown Special, SID.
Yeah, the SID, Uptown Special Improvement District, SID, SID.
Can you speak to the SID?
Yeah, well, you're the expert on it. If anyone knows SID.
I don't know about that. Under the Higher Revise Code, Chapter 1710, it speaks to special improvement districts. In a nutshell, and I've mentioned this to council in the past, the special improvement district is a property owner self-imposed fee that would be set by a 501(c)(3), of which the board members are the property owners within said defined area. For the special improvement district, for the Uptown area, the footprint, to kind of paint this picture for you, would be Carpenter to President Street. It would capture everything in between college and Congress, but not including addresses along college and Congress. For the past three and a half years, I have been engaging with the property owners within that footprint that I just described to you, one by one, describing the special improvement district with them and informing them, educating them about what a special improvement district can do, and to share with you and the audience here, a special improvement district, the funds that come into a special improvement district are, again, a set fee by linear foot or property valuation, but the linear foot seems to be the easier path to take because your linear footage typically is not going to change unless you buy adjoining properties or something of that nature. The money that comes in by set amount can be used for beautification within and only within the special improvement district and its boundaries.
within the special improvement district and its boundaries. It's taken me, like I said, three and a half years of engagement with those who have properties within said area. I needed 60%, or the, the SID needs 60% of those property owners or more. We have finally have achieved that goal. And so, what council will see coming before you is a three reading resolution accepting the bids, uh, bids, the, I'm sorry, petitions, I said bids several times, the petitions that the property owners have willingly signed on to. And once that's done and gone through the three reading process, then it gives the special improvement district the authority now to create a 501(c)(3), and then working with the county auditor's office to start collection on those properties for said amount, whatever the special improvement, improvement districts general council, or general assembly decides to impose on themselves, basically. It's kind of a self-imposed fee or tax, if you will. So, that's what you'll be seeing coming forward on Monday night. You'll be seeing the petitions, and you'll be seeing a resolution that is council accepting these, these petitions in order to create the Uptown Special Improvement District. Some of the beautification that I mentioned earlier could be everything from putting decorative benches up and down Court Street, or within the whole area, planters. It could be sidewalk improvements. It could also be more expensive features if the SID decided that the board wants to take on some bigger projects. They can also wait a couple of years of a collection or have a set aside for several years to create a larger set aside to where they could actually work with the city to apply from some larger infrastructure grants for community improvements in the special improvement district. I think most notably, one of the things that I've heard a lot from the property owners in the Uptown area is the opportunity with the SID to have continuous and contiguous snow removal during snow events, to where they would contract with someone to go and clear everything within the SID, as opposed to what we often see, which is kind of a quilt of snow removal in the Uptown area. It could also be used to hire someone to go around on a regular basis and, again, under contract, and remove gum from the sidewalks. It could be used for any number of things. It could even be used for something as seemingly far-fetched as having Uptown Wi-Fi if the, if all of them decided, "We would like to have Wi-Fi for anyone who's sitting in front of my storefront to be able to access free Wi-Fi." So, the sky's the limit in terms of what the SID board and the general assembly wants to do with that money that's collected. It does require two people from the city government to be on the board. There needs to be a member from city council who sits on that board via, I mean, that's per Ohio Revised Code, and the mayor, or my designee, to sit on that board as well. The remainder are all property owners.
Okay.
Uh, member McGee.
To your knowledge, is the, is the far side, the outside of the boundary, let's say, North Congress, is the west side of North Congress, is that part of, I mean, is the sidewalk on that side?
No, it's not.
Is the, is the, is the east side of?
No, it is not.
Okay. So, it's going to be mainly the, the east-west arteries and then Court Street?
It'll be Carpenter in between Congress and, that one's kind of odd, it'll go down to roughly Grovesner for Carpenter Street. Then it'll be State Street, and State Street will go to College, State and Mill. Will go, and end at College, it'll end on Congress. On the other side, Washington Street between College and Congress, and Union in between College and Congress. And then, the, it'll go as far south as I understand it, as I mentioned already, to President Street, up for Court. It'll end at President Street.
So, the north sidewalk of Carpenter would not be part of this?
The north side will.
It would, but not the west side of North Congress. So, it's not, see what I mean? So, if that's the, if those are the boundaries, the far side of each one, of Carpenter, it sounds like it is part of it, but not North Congress.
Well, I mean, it'll end right there at Congress, at North Congress.
Right, as you approach.
It won't capture, as an example, it wouldn't capture the west side of, of Mount Zion Church. Or, and it won't capture any addresses on Congress. It will not capture any addresses and their sidewalks on College either.
Can we get him, Matt?
Sure, certainly. Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry.
As a matter of fact, I can get you that. I can get you all the property addresses, absolutely.
That'd be handy for Monday.
The, the interesting thing about these as well, just so council knows, some of the other things that I've been working on with the special improvement district, there are basically three entities that are exempt from the footprint of special improvement districts. The first one being government buildings, municipal buildings. Second being universities, state universities, and third being churches. Since for the city, it would be the armory, it would be the parking garage and the city building. A city, a municipal can opt its municipal buildings in, and that's what I choose to do. I think that that would be the right thing to do. The university has also chosen to be, to take off their exemption and to be part of the SID, and so they are wanting to be paying members of the special improvement district, which would be, again, East Union up to College Street, and then, as I mentioned, all the way down to President for them. And the other, the other buildings within the SID anyway, from Union all the way up to Carpenter, would be the former Woolworths Building, which OU owns, and the Athena Theater. Those would have been exempt, but they're paying to have those in the SID as well. Churches, we, I didn't approach the churches necessarily to see that can be done later if they would like to be within the SID and the SID's services, so.
Member McGee.
Thank you. First, I'd like to applaud your efforts on doing this. I think it's a really good idea. I do have two questions, though. One is, is the city offering any kind of rebate or something to the participants in the SID? I know you've classified their contributions as almost a self-imposed tax, so is there any kind of quid pro quo there where the city is actually giving them something to do it? And the second question I, I had was, with the city opting in, as you indicated, that it would be the appropriate thing to do, I think, and do you have any idea what that would cost the city to participate in this?
It depends, let me answer your last question first. It would depend on, on what the general assembly decides upon as what the linear footage price would be. It has been mentioned $15 a linear foot. It's been mentioned as much as $30 a linear foot. $15 a linear foot for the city of Athens would cost us about $14,000 a year. And we could, that can certainly be drawn from what is our Athens Enhancement Fund line, which is designed for beautification projects in the Uptown area. So, that's yet to be determined what the actual cost would be. Councilmember McGee, to your first question, it's really important that council and everyone here tonight, or anyone who's watching, understand that a special improvement district is not a governmental entity at all. It's not a political subdivision. It's not a quasi-governmental element. It, it is a property owner initiative. A great example to give council, if you ever venture up to Lancaster and go to downtown Lancaster. Downtown Lancaster has a special improvement district, which is in its, its third round. They go, they, SID, once enacted, has to renew itself by the general assembly every five years in order to keep the SID rolling on. Lancaster's in its third go with this, and for anyone who has gone or remembers Lancaster 10, 15 years ago, it was a place that was struggling with a lot of, of inner-city decay and fallow buildings and, and things of that nature. And so, going up there, and I've, I've visited several times and spoken to their executive director, David Scheffler, it's quite impressive what they have been able to do in Lancaster to turn that around. Columbus has five special improvement districts. Theirs is, well, it's Columbus, so go figure. But Columbus uses some of their money in their Capital Crossroads Special Improvement District, which has the Pearl in it and some of those, you know, North High is in part of it. They, with the revenue that they bring in, which is about $1.9 million, they actually hire a, a social work expert who goes out and helps homeless get the services that they need, as well as, almost, within 24 hours, graffiti is removed. That's something that we've had the conversation with this SID, is to where the special improvement district can take on much more rapid graffiti removal than our wonderful people who've been doing that work for a long time have done. So, that's another valued service by the special improvement district property owner.
Member Costas.
Yes, thank you. And so, I was just thinking, thinking backwards, a couple of years ago, when, when this was just first starting to be explored, and, and correct me if I'm incorrect, but the, was it about 80% of property owners is what you need in order to, to kind of move forward? No, I'm wrong. Okay.
60%.
60%.
60% by linear foot is what we needed, and we're at about 61, 62%.
Okay, that was my next question, to know how much, how much buy-in existed here, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Great.
I just wondered, could you answer my question, though? The question was basically whether there's an offset at all involved for the property owners that would participate in the SID where the city would give them something in exchange for that?
No.
Okay.
No, there would not. And, and again, let me just restate what I was saying, and that is that the special improvement district is a property owner run and operated, and so, what, they would be rebating themselves? It, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to transportation. Councilmember Costas is chair, councilmember McGee and Crowell. And councilmember Butler will stay up here, too, because he's acting clerk tonight. Thank you.
President, as I might remain here so I can access the computer.
It's fine. Oh, that's fine, yeah. Just stay right there.
All right.
We ready? All right, thank you. We have a couple bullet points tonight for the Transportation Committee, actually four in particular. The first one is the Hocking-Athens Perry Community Action Program, that's HAPCAP. The two MOUs that we have with them, in reference to, to public transportation. So, we have two MOUs that are coming forward that need to be renewed, starting January 1 is the, is the deadline that we have to have these both applied for, or not applied for, but, but basically in, in, in process. This is both for our public transit and, and then also Go Bus. And these are, these are both about two years, I want to say, yeah, because 2022 is the expiration date on them. I did have one question, because both of them, with looking at that scopes of services, one specifically, our bus, our public bus transportation, public transit, that is, there is a financial responsibility that is paid out quarterly, based on ODOT's quarterly invoices. So, I did want to get some clarification on how much that is, just so people are aware of what, what our systems are, are costing us.
I can get that information for you.
Okay.
Councilmember McGee, from...
Oh, please don't.
Patricia Whitmer keeps, religiously keeps that information for you.
All right, okay, great. And then on the second one, the Go Bus, I did not see anything that specifically asked for, for, for specific payment, but there is, oh, let's see if I can find it. It was somewhere, oh, Purpose, Objectives, and Goals, under Section 1, that, number three, support of the inner-city bus system through planning, marketing, and capital investments. So, are there, is there also some funds that are transferred or, or thought are used in this, in this process?
In terms of external funding?
From, from the city, if we're, if, as we're entering into this MOU, you know, I see capital investments being listed as, as something that could, could come forward because of this, of this MOU. Is that?
I can get answers to that.
Okay. Perfect.
Member Costas.
And do we have any, any, that's, that's all I had with these. Do we have any questions from?
This is kind of piggybacking your question, Pete, and I just wondered whether there was any change in amounts being paid by the city in either of these MOUs, and, you know, just for the public, if they're watching, MOUs or memorandums of understanding, somewhat like a contract, so, so the question would be whether there's any substantial change in, in these. Both of the projects are incredibly wonderful projects, but I would like to know what the payment schedule would be, if so. Thank you.
And we do designate a portion of our income tax revenue towards this transportation project, so we do have that, and HAPCAP has come from, to us from time to time for replacement of equipment. So, that may be what that's referring to in there. And Utter Hecht, percentage-wise, on the income tax split on that, is it about 90 or 100,000 a year?
Yeah, we're basically partners with them, and it has changed over the years. We do get a, a small percentage for the use of our community center and the fact that we have employees who, who serve people who need to buy tickets. The buses, they're the ones who secure the grant money when a bus, when they need a new bus. And we used to take title of the buses, and we really felt like that wasn't necessary, so we changed that process. So, we don't get really involved in that anymore. We do, what we send to transportation is 1% of the, and remaining 85%, after all, the voted-on taxes are taken off the top of our tax mix, and I could send that out again to everybody, but we have voted tax that goes for general obligation, and that's 1.4, 5, 6, 1.6 now. And then, then 2.5% is what council decides what funds it will go to, and that comes out of that percent. So, it's 1% out of the 85% that we take in, if that makes sense. I'll send this out tomorrow.
That'd be great. Thank you. Okay. Do we have any other questions from the audience? Okay, great. Moving forward, the Residential Pilot Parking Permit Program. And I want to say that this is just preliminary, but we wanted it to just kind of be a little proactive because we do know that this is, this, this, going backwards, talking about this, this was a pilot parking permit, a 72-hour program that allowed people to park in the same place instead of 24 hours in certain areas, designating it for 72 hours. That pilot program ran for one year. We renewed it last year for another year, and our time is, is, is coming forward to, to once again revisit this and look at this again. So, I want to mention that I, I do hope to have a, a meeting soon with Captain Harvey to kind of go through some of, some of the points. I also believe he has sent out an email, I believe, to, to member Butler. He was telling me this just prior to the start of council, that, that this had come through, and was talking about the, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize. So, yes, so that, these two parking programs, we're going to be talking about these with Captain Harvey here.
They're related.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, they are.
Because it all has to do with parking. The mayor, yes, please.
I would like to comment that... Everything that I've heard from those who are using this 72-hour parking permits, that it's been very successful and they're very pleased with it. We don't have a whole lot of permit holders, because not a lot of people ask on the designated streets. So, I would request city council to certainly consider taking this off the pilot rolls and making it a modified program that we continue to use moving forward.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any questions? From the audience? Okay. All right. Okay. The 20... Okay, the 24-hour parking permit, so let's, let's talk about this one. This was, this was in reference to that email that I heard from, from Member Butler. So basically, the 24-hour parking, so this is, this is citywide, this isn't certain areas of the, of the city, you can only park your car for 24 hours in one spot. Some people have, some citizens have found that in order to, because we don't have designated spots on most of our residential streets, that if you roll your car forward maybe a few feet, you can basically live within the rules of the, of the permit, of the 24-hour rule. And so it looks like we're trying to make some steps moving forward, saying that the said vehicle must be moved every 24 hours from its existing parking location to a new location, not less than 20 feet away, or a different space, if spaces are delineated by pavement markings. So this is just a small adjustment in hopes to, to basically allow that cars do not become storage, you know, markers on our, on our city streets. Once again, this is something that I do want to, want to follow up with, either the Safety Service Director or the Assistant Safety Service Director, along with Captain Harvey, and I think the mayor's seen that email, we're trying to get a schedule together and meet, meet on that. Do we have any, any questions on this one? Member Crowell?
No question, just a comment. I do hear from citizens who walk their car, roll around the block, or push it forward in order to satisfy this rule, and I understand why we have the, the rule, but I, I don't have a solution to say to those people who feel it's silly to drive their car around the block and park in a different spot. There are obviously carbon emissions going on there, and driving your car to move it, I don't have a solution.
Correct, yeah.
But that's something to consider, how we can best satisfy both, both issues.
Yeah, you know, and I think, you know, we have to look way back, you know, I keep, keep going backwards into the past, but, you know, when we think about that 24-hour rule, you know, this was, this was to eliminate that, that storage parking that was happening as university students that weren't allowed to have their vehicles, you know, freshman, sophomore year, they were finding places to, to keep their vehicles somewhat close to their, you know, to their, to their neighborhoods. Not all of them, but I mean, this is also just, you know, this was just something to hopefully allow our streets to be a little bit more useful for, for everyone that uses them. So, yeah, I'm, you know, I'm in a similar, similar court in that, that it does, it does produce other issues, but we have to also look at the whole, I guess, and just see what, what we think is, is going to work well for our city. The other thing that we did also, and I haven't really gotten a clear definition of, or how this is affecting it, but, but the recent ruling about, about, about being unable to chalk tires is also kind of driving some of this, this conversation, too. So, you know, as, as changes happen, changes happen. Member McGee?
From my point of view, I think it's a stereotype of people pushing their cars. I think it's more likely that people drive their cars to do something and come back, and the space is still there. I see nothing wrong with that during the interim, if somebody wants to park there, that's fine, they can park there, but again, unless there's some sort of study showing that the number of people that are trying to cheat the system by pushing their cars or, or just driving it around the block really quick, something like that, I, I think that's a very low percentage, and again, I think it's a stereotype, and I think that what this is going to do is to impose another burden on the residents of streets who do park on the streets, and it seems like it's a very impractical kind of burden, because again, when did they move their car, how far did they move it, suddenly they have to find a space 20 feet away from where they were parked, which again, seems total nonsense. So I, I would like some statistics or some sort of evidence that this is a real problem before we start jumping down and trying to impose a solution. Thank you.
And Member McGee, I think you're hitting the nail right on the head about, you know, beforehand, they could chalk a tire, and then they would know if the vehicle had been moved or not. Now, if the vehicle moves and then comes back to the same spot.
Well, they can chalk the street in front of the tire, and if the chalk is disturbed by the wheel, then we know it's been moved.
Got it. This is something to think about. Anybody else have any other additional questions on this? Do we? Okay. Yes, please.
So Rob Delak, 124 Morris Avenue, and I live on one of those streets that has a 24-hour parking restriction. I generally don't have to park cars on the street, but we do sometimes, and we've missed once, we're by nine minutes, literally nine minutes, and we got a ticket. I hear complaints all the time on the neighborhood Facebook group about this issue, and it's mostly by people who weren't here long-term, newer residents, who don't realize the history and why the rule's in place, but think it's sort of crazy that there's a 24-hour restriction as it is. This addition to that, I think, isn't going to be well-received. And my thought exactly when you brought this up was that, I wonder if this is related to the court decision that, that made it, restricted the use of chalking of tires. It was in Michigan, a court decision, but it affected the entire country, I believe, as far as it was a federal court. And it is probably more difficult for the city to enforce the 24-hour rule without being able to chalk tires, and again, it's not going to fly very well with the residents, I think, if that's part of the justification for this. So this could be controversial, I'll say.
All right.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Okay. Moving forward, holiday, hopefully this is not controversial, holiday parking, garage and continuous on-street parking. So basically, once again, as, you know, I was talking about Halloween just two weeks ago, and now, now I'm talking about Christmas. This is just our annual suspension, change of our parking within the city for two things. One is that we, we will suspend the parking fee in the parking garage, excluding two-hour meter spaces, and that is on the, on one upper deck, and that is after 5:00 PM on Thursday, December 5th, 12th, and 19th, all day Saturday, November 30th, December 7th, 14th, and 21st. This is, of course, to, to allow people to, to have access to the uptown for a little bit lesser charge, and so it's just kind of a, a way to make sure that the businesses have access to, to more parking in the uptown area during that time. The, the second, the second piece of legislation that we'll be putting forth, this is that 24-hour rule, parking rule, this is, would be a suspension going from Sunday, December 15th through Wednesday, January 1st of January 2020. I do see that we will have to make a change. I see that's being listed as 2019. And this is just because we have, a lot of our population will, will take leave of Athens during this time to visit family, and, and we want to make sure that we are not ticketing their cars a bunch while they are out of town, so. Do we have any, any questions for these? Okay. Anything from the audience? We're good. Okay.
We're on to finance.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Reisner chairs this with Councilmembers Butler, Crowell, and Kotsas.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe we have a couple of items under appropriations. First one I would like to look at is a request from our police chief, Tom Pyle. He's making a request to make a change to the firearms that the city police now carry. He wants to, and he gives a long justification of why, to change from their current firearms, which are 40 caliber, I'm trying to see what the Glock, to 9mm, let's see, ma'am, I'm reading it wrong, currently, the department handgun weapon platform is Glock 40 caliber, Smith &amp; Wesson. We originally chose this platform in 2005 due to ballistic superiority of 40 caliber round compared to other commercially available L.A. options such as the 9mm. Then he goes on to state that since with current technology, and there's really no reason ballistically why the 9mm cannot be used instead of the 40 caliber, but his justification is that the cost of the ammunition is, is far less than they're currently paying. So he's making a request that they will exchange the, their current firearms as, as trade-in value, and then will be requesting from the city approximately, let's see, what's he looking at? My guess, I meant that this would cost in the vicinity of $10,000 with trade-in of our current system. So I believe he'll be coming forward, or you of the administration will have a set figure. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, he also feels, as you were mentioning, the trade-in allowance right now is, is high in terms of what they would get for the Smith &amp; Wesson's, those 40 calibers, and then apply that towards the, the 9mm's, the kind of, maybe in your email, Jeff, Councilmember Reisner? And that is, the, the difference in the costs of those rounds per case, you know, for a 45 caliber, or 40, I believe it's around $180, $190 a case, whereas for a 9mm rounds, it's around $104 a case, so there's significant savings there when you look at the whole police department unto itself. So he believes that this is a cost-savings move in the long run.
Would it be possible to find out how many rounds a year the police department expends?
Sure. Yeah, I can find that out.
Know how much we're spending in ammunition? Any questions from committee? The next item has to do with the budget and costs associated with the recreation center. We have the auditor here and the mayor. I understand that we, we as a city, as we control the community center recreation department, may have a situation of lack of funds.
Yes, we.
Certain accounts.
Yes, that fund, this is community center, which includes daycare and any programs that happen within the community center, the pool, ball teams, a lot of those other activities come out of the recreation fund, and that's separate. So we're talking about the community center.
All right.
And they have, not always struggle, but they've never had a lot of surplus in their budget. Typically, the recreation department doesn't either. However, we are in a bad spot right now. I think we all know that another business opened in town, which has taken away some of their memberships, the memberships are down pretty far.
I've heard about 50%. Is that about right?
I, I don't know that it's that much, but, you know, there's no good way to make up for that. The other thing I think is contributing is the community center also, besides the fees they charge, depends on tax revenue. So when we built the community center, we had one tax, and these were both voted on for, to build the, the building, and another one for ongoing, you know, expenses regarding equipment, you know, replacement equipment and upkeep. The thing is, the tax revenue is flat. There were a lot of changes, I know I've harped on this plenty from the state level in the last year, that have really hurt our tax revenue. At this point, this year, and this is after the big tax time, we are up 1/10th of a percent, which amounts to $16,000 for the whole year, and there are seven funds that receive money out, out of our tax revenue. So, you know, there's the debt fund, of course, but there's also the general fund, it's, it's our main source of revenue. So the small amount that does go to the community center is, is probably less than even that. So they're struggling, they're aware of it, we moved some money around a week or so ago. We're trying to be a little more proactive here and let them know the bills that are coming up. And at this point, I think that we, we kind of robbed Peter to pay Paul last time, but, you know, that's going to catch up to us. We still have to pay these other bills, put that money back on those purchase orders. And so I, my suggestion right now, because I don't see any quick fix for them, would be to transfer money out of 273, which is the new tax fund for the pool, and we put about 60% of that revenue into the debt fund to pay the pool payments, and 40% into 273, a new fund we created. And as you recall, there was a list of things that money could be spent on, and it was, it covered a lot of things, and one is operating expenses, and we, we just, we need an influx of money in there until they can come up with a solution, which, as I said, I think will be difficult to make up for that loss of revenue. I would like to request $20,000, which is the minimum, and that's assuming that we will still get some revenue in over the next couple of weeks through the end of the month. Right now, yeah, we, we just need to do that. I can send out a lot of numbers, but I don't want to just get too far down in the weeds, but I think we're going to need at least that, if not 30,000, but like I said, we'll have some revenue. However, we've been working with the recreation department, we've gotten reports early, we're making projections on the revenue that we'll have by the end of this week, and at that point, we will be, be short for the month, so unless we can get some more money in there before the end of the month, then we'll be, you know, delinquent on, on some of our bills. We won't be able to pay any more bills. And so that is my request, so that's left to, left to council to decide on that. Thank you.
Madam President?
And I have one other sheet paper, I realized, that was from clerk of council, that is there some money that's needed in capital, 8,000 in capital, for two MDTs for the cruisers? Or is that part of the earlier?
That's part of Chief Pyle's request.
Got it, okay.
So we talked about the weapons, which will probably be the major expense. The chief is asking for money out of the two smaller funds that are only for him to use, 293 and 294. And the total is 41,000, 26,000 out of one, 15,000 out of the other.
Okay.
I'm not sure which one, the 8,000, but I, I made myself a note, President Nysel, I looked at that, and I need to get with Tom and see which ones.
He's saying 26,000 from 293, and, yeah, 15 from 294.
Yeah, and so whether he does need to put some in, you know, what transaction class he needs to put that money into.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I just want to mention, and I may lean on the auditor just for a second, but we also, since we're talking community center, we do have 272, which 272 was the former community center debt fund, and once we paid down all of our debt on the community center, we were left with, Utter Heck reminded me, it was about $600,000, give or take, that was there. And so I'm just sharing that with council, that currently we have $448,496 unappropriated, and that's a good thing, because that can be used for maintenance that we have to have done on the community center, which in turn could, could help offset anything in 271 when it comes to maintenance and help move this forward. But I appreciate auditor's help, Utter Heck's help on, on kind of wandering through this, because it has been kind of a. it has been kind of a conundrum, and I know it has been for the Director of Arts Parks and Recreation, Terry Moore, and she's been working very hard on trying to get things turned around. A lot of effort going into programming other things, and as the auditor mentioned, you know, there's competition out there in the city of Athens, and sometimes that competition will directly impact our own services that we provide for our citizens through Arts Parks and Recreation.
I just want to clarify about what he said. The reason I asked for the money out of 273 is because that money can be used for operating costs. So even though, and the mayor said, this would be for upkeep if we need equipment or any improvements to the building, new HVAC, anything like that, we can use 272 for that. Basically, we were told by our bond council that even though we had money left over, that we can still only use that for the items that were listed in the original ordinance for the construction of the community center.
But not operations.
Right.
So it is very restrictive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Member Butler?
Thank you. Historically, one of the things I think that has been nice about the community center is that veterans have been able to access the space for free, is my understanding, and I believe the mayor is continuing that policy. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you. So I think, again, that's one of the nice things about our community and inclusiveness and a willingness to embrace all those. That sort of thing, yeah.
Does the administration or the auditor have any other appropriation requests that I'm not aware of? That's the only two I have.
Okay. We'll stand adjourned at 8:54. I thank everyone for being here. We'll see you next Monday night.